We were told on February 20th, that that was a Thursday, that on Sunday, the state of California and the federal government were going to relocate 70 people from the Diamond Princess that were infected, and they were going to bring them to Fairview Developmental Center. But we say, this simply cannot happen. By the end of the day on Friday, we had a temporary restraining order against the federal government and the state government. So this was City of Costa Mesa against Gavin Newsom and Donald Trump and all of the different agencies under them. And we prevailed. If those folks would have come into the Fairview Developmental Center, we would have had an outbreak. We would have been an APA center, but they would have been magnified if those folks would have come here.
I'm Brandi Stroutman with Costa Mesa Brief. We are meeting today with John Stevens, who is the current mayor pro tem, running to be the city council representative for District One. Thank you for meeting with us today.
It's great to be here.
And who are you running against?
I'm running against Don Harper and Jason Camala.
And we have met with both of them already, so we'll probably cover some of the stuff they've said in their interviews. But first, what are some of your accomplishments as mayor pro tem?
Well, we've had a lot of accomplishments as a council and as a city in the last four years. I'll tell you, a couple of my personal favorites is we established a no-kill animal shelter. And we had a real problem with our animal shelter before I was elected. And I did one of my, what I call, deep dives and determined that we needed to make some serious changes to the way we cared for our animals. And so now we have a great no-kill animal shelter, and it's working very well. We have a citizens oversight committee called the Animal Services Committee that's given it great marks, and we're moving forward with that. And that's one thing I'm very proud of. The other thing is I was able to establish an Independence Day celebration. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it this year because of COVID, but we had a really great event in 2019. And then there's the things that we've been focused on as a council, reducing homelessness, staffing our police department, focusing on public safety, and also occupying a lot of time in the first term of my being on council is addressing the issues with sober living homes. That's occupied a lot of time. So I'm very proud of my record, and I look forward to four more years.
So what issues are unique to District One?
Well, I think in District One, we have some particular infrastructure issues. For me, the biggest thing that's happening in District One is the Adams Avenue project. You know, so many people that cut through District One to go to both the lower birds and the upper birds, and then to come to Harbor, use Adams Avenue. And it's really, I would say, compared to how much important that corridor is, it's in a state of disrepair. Not only that, active transportation projects are taking on a new level of importance in our city. And Adams Avenue is an unsafe place to ride your bike. And then, of course, we've got on the north side, a dirt sidewalk, which, come on, give me a break, in District One, in the great city of Costa Mesa, to have a dirt sidewalk. So we're moving forward with the Adams Avenue project, which is going to repave the streets, create safe bikes, bike lanes and walk lanes, and also, of course, get rid of the, and beautiful medians too, and get rid of the dirt sidewalk that we've had ever since I've lived in the district.
One of the issue a lot of the voters are upset with that does fall in your district is One Metro West. So what's going on with that?
Well, One Metro West is kind of in a holding pattern. It was passed to move forward to the city council by the Planning Commission. And then the applicant decided to not go forward to the city council. So it was at that stage where it would have gone to the city council, had the city council approved it to go on the ballot, it would have been voted on it or under Measure Y. So the applicant, Rose Equities, has taken the property, project back. And I'm not quite sure what they're doing. They're doing some revisions or whatever, and it's up to them when they want to bring it back. And then depending on what revisions they make, it will depend on whether it goes back through the Planning Commission before the city council, or it goes directly to the city council.
When you say goes directly to the city council, do you mean bypasses Measure Y?
No, no, bypasses the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has already, the project has already moved from the Planning Commission stage to the city council. So the sequence is Planning Commission, city council, voters. And you have to have green light, green light, green light in order to do the project under our current Measure Y environment.
Some people are claiming you tried to bypass Measure Y. Not you, just you specifically, the city council.
No, 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 we didn't do that. What happened was, we had a, we definitely didn't try to bypass, matter of fact, it's to the contrary. We had a meeting where we considered two possible ballot amendments. One is Measure Q, what is now Measure Q, which is the retail and home delivery cannabis measure. And the other thing we considered is whether we should explore amendments to Measure Y to put them on the ballot. We decided not to do that. So it was discussed, we got a lot of community feedback, and decided not to put that on the ballot or even explore it. Instead, of course, we moved forward, and I was on the ad hoc committee for Measure Two relating to the cannabis ordinance that did get approved to go to the ballot by the city council.
So there's been rumors, though, that the James Righeimer video on Speak Up Costa Mesa is what changed the course of getting that on the ballot?
Don't believe rumors. It had nothing to do with my position. I can't speak for the other council members, but I did, I think I saw the video, but that had nothing to do with my position that we shouldn't even move forward to look at an amendment for Measure Y at the upcoming election.
So there's also been a lot of talk on the internet and rumors about the current budget of Costa Mesa or deficits. So what is going on?
Well, we passed a balanced budget, but I will tell you that the sequence of that was interesting. It's in February with respect to the 2020 budget. We had a very good report by our financial director, who said we were on track to exceed our revenues, this is in 2020, and we had fewer expenses than we had budgeted. So we were in really good shape. That was February. Well, we all know what happened in March. So March 16th, South Coast Plaza closed on its own, even before the governor's shutdown order. South Coast Plaza represents a lot of sales revenue. And it's not just South Coast Plaza, of course. There were a lot of businesses in Costa Mesa that had to stop operations in March. And then, of course, we've kind of moved forward with different openings, and we've moved forward, and we've gone back, and now we're moving forward again. And that had an effect on our budgeted revenue. And so since our budgeted revenue was projected to be lower than it would have been because of COVID, we had to make some adjustments. So we made those adjustments. We cut, the staff did this, cut $10.8 million from what's called departmental expenses. We negotiated eight different collective bargaining agreements within about a one month's time to have $3 million savings in furloughs. In April, unfortunately, 92 part-time employees had to be furloughed or laid off. And then we have in our reserves, what we call our disaster reserves, that can only be used if there's a declared disaster. So we're budgeted as using 10.2 million of those restricted disaster reserves for 2021. But I actually, just like I was telling you about 2020, I think we're going to do better than we expect in 2021 based on some indicators. For example, the golf course is one line item in the budget. Normally, the golf course, we get $2.2 million a year from the golf course. This year, it was budgeted at 1.575, a reduction. The golf course is trending right now. They've had record months, and it's trending at being $2 million over budget. Also, you look at all these businesses and the creative ways they've responded, and we've responded as a city, and I think we're going to be doing better. South Coast Plaza is open again, which is great. They're doing terrific. And even during the shutdown, they put up the pavilion and they did a lot of sales. So I'm hoping that our revenue numbers, the actual revenue, exceeds our projections. And, but, but we will not know that until the fall of 2021.
Now, you mentioned the reserves, and there are people claiming that the current council drained the reserves.
No, not exactly. That's not true at all. So the prior council set a reserve number of, that we should have, at $55 million. As of COVID, at the time of COVID, what we had in our reserves was $53.8 million. Now we have 38, I think it's 38.7. I know it's 38, don't hold me to the seven. But the things that were, that were, the reserves were used on are, to get us to that number, that was the number that was approved by the city council roughly, the 55 million. The things that they were used on are the Yellowstone case, where we protected our sober living home ordinance. That cost us millions of dollars. The new library, Fire Station One, the new community center, and of course, our permanent homeless shelter, that's going to cost about $7 million. Every single council member, in every form of the council, going back to Jim Righeimer, Steve Menzinger era, moving forward when there were the five of us, to now the seven of us, have voted unanimously for all of those projects. And reserves were in fact used for those projects. But they were for the better part of the community. I mean, where would we be without our sober living home ordinances? Where would we be without our, with Fire Station One? We'd have firefighters in peril. Where would we be without the things that we've done to bring homeless people off the streets, including our shelter? And then now we have our beautiful library and the Norma Herzog Community Center. Reserves for sure were used for that. But even after those expenses, we were at that approved, roughly, that approved $55 million limit until COVID. And then we were able to then use those reserves to address our budgetary issues, to get us through the COVID kind of economic calamity that we faced.
So you mentioned the homeless shelter was part of the issue with those reserves. Let's talk about the homelessness, because I was recently informed, I was getting my numbers off the city website, and I was recently informed, they haven't been updated. So do you have a current count of our homeless?
Well, let me tell you about the, the way the counting goes. So we have what's called a point in time count, and it's done every other year. So there was a point in time count that was done, it's done by the county, and it's very specific, and it's very labor intensive. That was done in January of 2019, and they came up with 187 unsheltered homeless in the city of Costa Mesa. January of 2019. April of 2019, we opened our shelter. Since we opened our shelter, we've housed 151 people. So people coming off the streets, I mean, think about that. Think of 151 people in permanent housing that weren't in housing before. So that's not directly responsive to your question, though, is it? Because you want to know, well, how many are out there now? And I can tell you that the, the most recent census that I got from the city is 64. Now, you may say that that's low, you may say that that's high. I don't know, because I will tell you that that number is not a number you can take to the bank, because it wasn't done with the methodology of the point in time count that is done every other year.
So along those lines is, there's projections from financial institutions that 37% of California renters are facing eviction January 1st. Some of those will potentially become homeless. What's the, is the city working on any sort of response to address that potential issue?
Yes, but the dates aren't quite right. So we have our eviction moratorium in the state that is now extended into March. But let's not quibble. And let's not quibble whether it's 37% or whether it's January or March. As I said last night in a meeting, there's a bad moon rising. There are going to be people in 2021, people in 2021 that are going to fall into homelessness because of economic reasons. And so, yes, absolutely. Yesterday, we had a study session, and we spent 2 hours and 40 minutes going over where we've been, where we are, and what we need to do. And I made that exact point, is one of the things that's going to happen, for example, is in the first quarter of 2021, we're going to open up our homeless shelter on Airway. That's a huge structure. I don't know if you've ever been by there.
Not yet.
Probably not been in there. It's hard to get in now because it's under construction, but it's a huge structure, and it takes, it takes 74 people. So that, we're going to have more capacity at that permanent shelter. And then we're working more regionally. Huntington Beach just opened up, or sorry, just broke ground on a 174-person shelter. Newport Beach, there's discussions about collaborating with Newport Beach, collaborating with Santa Ana, which also just opened up a shelter. So what's going to happen, I think, in 2021 to address this very serious issue, it will happen, more homelessness, is we're going to have to collaborate with our neighboring cities. And I don't know if you remember this, but I was the chairman of the Orange County ACCOC Homelessness Task Force. So I have a lot of those relationships with people. So like, I went to the groundbreaking for the, the shelter in Huntington. And so I have those relationships with those council members. And so this is going to be a major issue for us in Costa Mesa and for us regionally, the people that are affected by COVID and families going into homelessness.
So speaking of COVID, what was the city's response to it, and what was your role in that response?
Okay, well, the first thing, which happened in no other city in the United States of America, so is, we were told on February 20th, that, that was a Thursday, that on Sunday, the state of California and the federal government were going to relocate 70 people from the Diamond Princess that were infected, and they were going to bring them to Fairview Developmental Center. I got the call on February 20th. It was, it was me and Arliss Reynolds on the call. We get off the call, one minute later, we're talking, and we say, this simply cannot happen. And so the two of us got on the phone with the city manager and the city attorney. We later looped in the mayor, and we said, we have to stop this from happening. We hired Jennifer Keller on a Friday, that was on a Thursday. By the end of the day on Friday, we had a temporary restraining order against the federal government and the state government. So this was City of Costa Mesa against Gavin Newsom and Donald Trump and all of the different agencies under them. And we prevailed. Now, that was very important, Brandi, because remember where we were at as a community in February of, of this year? There was no PPEs, nobody knew about masks, nobody knew about social distancing, very few people knew anything about COVID or the coronavirus.
We were just being told to wash our hands.
Exactly. And if those infected, with the state of our, our lack of preparation and protection, if those folks would have come into the Fairview Developmental Center, we would have had an outbreak akin to New York, perfect example, Mardi Gras, right, around the same time, New Orleans, we would have been an APA center. And we've had our problems in Orange County and in Costa Mesa with respect to having infections and deaths, to be sure. But they would have been magnified if those folks would have come here. So that's the first area that I got involved in. Then as we moved through, as a council, we really started to dig in and start to understand what was going on. And the staff was great. Lori Ann Farrell Harrison was educating us. Chief Stefano was working on us. And another guy that you don't hear a lot of is Jason Dempsey, who's our manager of emergency services. So they were briefing the council constantly on what to do. So we did some closures of parks, we closed the golf course. And gosh, what a sad day that was. I was the one that made the phone call to the city manager, and I said, we got to close the golf course. And because it was so overrun, a friend of mine said there were 60 people on the putting green, no social distancing. This was in March. So we shut down the golf course that very day. After that, within about a month, five weeks later, Katrina Foley and I were on the ad hoc committee to open the golf course with protections, and we did so. And as I told you, it's been a huge success. We had no outbreaks from the golf course. And also, the other thing we've done is, you know, we talked about homelessness, keep the shelter safe. I told you, so we've, we've housed all these folks. We've housed 41 people since COVID started. Not one person in our shelter or in our motels has gotten COVID-19. That is something we're all very proud of. So, and of course, the mask mandate, which I'm sure you got a follow-up question on that. The mask mandate, the eviction moratorium to keep people in their homes, applying the eviction moratorium to commercial businesses, so that our restaurants wouldn't have to leave before they can get, survive and get their head above, above water. We've moved businesses outside. We have a thing called Restore Costa Mesa Recovery Team, where businesses from other sectors come, and I'm on that committee with council member Mar and Mayor Foley. There are a lot of things we've done. We've been more active, I think, in the city of Costa Mesa and real leaders at addressing COVID than any other city in Orange County. And then with respect to the Fairview Development issue, any other city in the world, no other city had to deal with that issue, only Costa Mesa, and we hit it head-on.
I wasn't going to ask the mask mandate question, just because you're already on the city council. But I do want to say that Costa Mesa Brief did cover the press conference when you, the city got the restraining order against both the state and the federal government. And I was very impressed by the partisan, nonpartisan response. Everyone was there, standing up there, Democrat or Republican, just all agreeing to it. So that was a great response.
It was a brief moment of bipartisanship. And I'll tell you something, too. I'll, I got to give one guy credit. The mayor of the city of Newport Beach, Will O'Neill, within 20 minutes of us going public that we were going to file this lawsuit, he called up and said, he called Mayor Foley and said, what can we do? How can we help? And we got on the phone, the city council, when we made that decision on that Friday, that we're going to file that lawsuit, the entire city council got on the phone with community leaders, you know, people at South Coast Plaza, the, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, business leaders, people from the different agencies, the school board, the sanitary district, the water board, and said, heads up, this lawsuit's going to be filed. And so we wanted them to know from us, from the council, before they heard it from the press.
So we do need more of that bipartisan response to things going on, but there's been kind of a pull in the city for a long time. First, we had a council that was heavily funded by Republican PACs and the GOP. And now it seems to be pulling to the Democrat side with this last council. How can you maintain bipartisanship when there's so much money coming in from, whether it's from the Republicans or the Democrats?
Well, I'm everybody's council member. I mean, I'm not, I am, or I'm a registered Democrat, but I don't, I don't run as a Democrat. I don't, but more importantly, I don't do my job as a Democrat. I mean, I come to this just as a community servant. I come as somebody who's lived in Costa Mesa for 31 years, coached in Costa Mesa, raised my kids in Costa Mesa, and I wanted to have a positive influence on my community. I don't come at it as a Democrat. I am one, but that's not the way I come at the job. And I, I have Republicans that I love, that I'm friends with, that I engage with, and it doesn't matter to me. It's, we're here to do a job. It's not about the R and the D, it's not about the red and the blue. This is a nonpartisan position to do, to be a steward of the community for this period of time. My loyalty is to Costa Mesa, not to any party, and that's the way it should be. And I think, by the way, that's the way it is, I would say, on the council. Of course, we're all registered in some party. But when I interact with the council members who are on now, the seven, I feel like they're really trying to do what's in the best interest of the city. I really do. And even though you disagree, we disagree sometimes. You may disagree sometimes with what we're doing. I do feel like everybody, I don't question anybody's motives. I think everybody's got their heart in the right place and is operating in good faith.
So a lot of people, because if you're on Facebook or Nextdoor, it seems like there's still a lot of complaints about crime, but it actually has been in a very steady decline. It's all out there on the city website for anybody who wants to look it up. What has the current council done to bring those numbers down?
Well, there's, I'd say there's three major things that we've done. One thing is police staffing. So the number one issue in 2016 was police staffing. Our staff level of sworn officers was dangerously low, it was about 100. So ever since 2016, when I was elected, we've steadily grown that number. So as of the last budgetary cycle, it was 127. And by the way, just today, we had new police officers that graduated from the academy. The difficulty with police staffing, though, of course, is there's ebbs and flows. There's retirement, and then there's new folks, and so you're constantly trying to work to get the staffing levels up. And we've done that consistently, and we've had some success. Like I said, from 100 to 127, our budgeted number is 136. That's number one. Number two, addressing the issue with the sober living homes. The ordinance was in place when I was elected. We amended our sober living home ordinances in 2017, but more importantly, we started to enforce them. We had application after application that went through the Planning Commission and then the city council. And then, of course, as I talked about earlier with the Yellowstone case and many other cases, we had to defend those ordinances, and we did successfully. As a result of those efforts, the number of sober, sober living homes in the city went from about 300 to about 90. That's an exponential improvement. The reason of it is, is because those 90 are now permitted and in the main are the good operators, and they're spread out. So there's less impact. We were seeing a lot of crime before with people who would kind of wash out of sober living homes and be what's called curbed. And they, maybe they came from Minnesota, maybe they came from West Virginia, and they had no place to go. And they were, they were dirty, you know, I mean, in terms of their addiction, they tested dirty, and they were, said, here you go, you're, you're on the, you're on the curb in Costa Mesa, that's a dangerous circumstance. And then finally, the third thing is, as we talked about earlier, we addressed homelessness. We, we got our homeless number down. Now, I have that as third, because, you know, the homeless, they're, of course, I hate using the word "the homeless," right? I mean, there's, they're human beings, and there's a whole gamut. There's some property crimes associated with people that are experiencing homelessness. There's, you know, I guess, some personal crime as well. But I don't want to, you know, everybody to get the idea that there was all these homeless criminals running around. You know, I mean, most of the folks that are homeless are having serious financial issues. But reducing that number improves public safety.
Is there any plans to implement anything new in the city council that will reduce the number even more?
Well, we talked about that. I mean, it's not like, it's not that we're going to do anything necessarily new at city council, but it's going to be implementing what we've already done. So our permanent homeless shelter, which is going to be much bigger, that, that's going to be open. We're going to cut the ribbon on that in the first quarter of 2021. You know, and it just gives you an idea of how long these projects take and the lifespan of these projects, because we bought that building in, I believe it was, well, it was the first quarter of 2019. 2019. And it's going to open in the first quarter of 2021. And that's, that's a lightning pace for these types of projects. If you can, believe it or not, capital improvement projects take a long time. So that's going to go, and that's, I think that's going to make a big, a big difference.
So just one final question for you, is why should the voters of District One vote for you?
Well, we talked about my record. We talked about what has happened. You know, when, when the stuff comes down, you know, when somebody gets a call and says that the Diamond Princess people are coming, you want somebody like me on the city council. I've been a practicing trial attorney for 31 years. So I have these skills that other people can't bring to bear. And over the last four years, those skills have come in very handy. Back when I was, before I was elected, we were filing cases that we shouldn't file, we were losing cases we should have won, we had all kinds of problems with our city attorney. I actually tried to change out the city attorney in my first two years. Now we have a great city attorney, Kim Barlow. So you look at judgments that have been made in the last four years, and I'm very proud of the judgments I've made. I'm very proud of the reforms that I've been a part of. Hiring Lori Ann Farrell Harrison, I think she's a terrific city manager with a good finance background. I'm really glad that she was in that position during our COVID situation. I was on the hiring committee for our new city manager. That's probably the most important vote I've taken, because of how important a city manager is. So I have the record. And I, and you know, like I said earlier, with the animal shelter, I'm the type of guy that will do a deep dive. If there's a problem, I'll explore it until there's a solution. Also, Brandy, I've never missed a meeting. I've gone to every single meeting. I've made over 150 motions to the council. And so I've become, by virtue of the vote of my colleagues unanimously, the mayor pro tem. I can tell you that those council members don't take that lightly. Who do they want to be the mayor, when the mayor can't be the mayor? They ask me. So how does that relate to the people of District One? Who do you want to represent you? Do you want somebody to represent you that has good relationships with the council, good relationships with the staff, right? And a good, strong record, and a good background? That's what I offer, for four years. And then I'm going to go back to coaching sports or whatever. This is just my community service. So all I'm asking for is the opportunity to be of service for another four years.